Senator, by the United States of America, to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, on our ground, in this world, liberty, justice, for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, be with us, and see you, we mention the citizens, the citizen and community, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
So the item C, approval agenda, this is the approved agenda for today, July 12th, 2021, Planning Commission Regular Meeting.
I make a motion to approve it. All seconded, all trained. Aye. Aye.
Item D, citizens' comments, and we do have Angie Dunst at the Chamber of Commerce, she will be presenting item H point one, so, at your leisure, Mr. Chair, if you want to close this portion of citizens' comments.
Close citizens' comments.
Very good. So item E, approval of the minutes, this is to approve the, excuse me, Planning Commission Workshop Minutes, I'm sorry, it's not the Planning Commission, it's a government body, but it's the Planning Commission Regular Minutes from June 14th, which was the sign regulation, design guidelines, C2, General Business District, zoning addition, R4, zone addition, rural, urban intent, and the site plan for the Arbor Creek Clubhouse.
Good morning. I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes? All seconded. All trained. Aye. Aye.
So item F, there are none, old business, none, new business, this is going to be item H1, Chamber of Commerce Report, so, quick background, Angie Dunst is the Director of the City of Goddard, Chamber of Commerce, she helps grow the business environment of the city and has a pulse in the local and regional business atmosphere. Chamber of Commerce helps manage different events throughout the city, most notably the Fall Festival and National Night Out. Recently, Chamber of Commerce held a Ladies' Night event in which the company Development Director, being myself, spoke on the growth of the city and helped to cultivate the ideal city image as the city moves into the future. During this meeting, citizens were asked to answer a series of questions to help city staff gather intelligence on what the citizens were looking for, both in terms of improvements, but also wins for the city for what they were doing right. The city asked participants 10 unique questions to help stimulate conversation, and these answers were written down in our attached agenda packet under Exhibit H point one A. Angie will speak on results and findings from the Ladies' Night, there are 10 questions, but we're only going to address about three of them, and then there'll be presentation of ideas and business growth, as well as questions and answers from Planning Commission, if you have any, and it'll be more of an open dialogue, and then upcoming events. So, without further ado, Angie Dunst? Thank you.
Good evening, as Micah said, I'm Angie Dunst, President and CEO of the Goddard Chamber, thank you for having me here tonight, and I'm excited to talk about our Ladies' Night. Mike and I began talking about Ladies' Night quite a while back, and so, we weren't able to do it last year, obviously, with COVID, and so it was kind of exciting to be able to actually hold the event this, in June. It was held on June 18th at Tanganyika Wildlife Park, and about 40 ladies from our community attended, so it was very well attended. Micah presented a short presentation, and then we asked them to have group discussions and also write down their thoughts on 10 unique questions. Great input was given, and it was actually a very, very positive evening, we received lots of positive input. Make sure I do this right here, there we go. I'm going to give you feedback from three of those questions specifically, and Micah was kind enough to do an image map or a word map for us. On question number one, we asked the participants what they noticed most about the city they live in, and as you can see, school, the community, park, Sunset Trail, Splash Pad were the most notable answers on that. And question number two, if I can get my papers here, they were asked where they spend most of their time in their local city besides their home. We had a lot of answers on this one, but as you can see, library, the park, Walmart, community center, Splash Pad, pool, Tanganyika, and their neighborhood were the most answered. In later questions, we see some of the same answers were mentioned when they asked what community amenities are important for enticing people to move into the community, so that was quite interesting. Question number three, have you ever felt happy at a location outside, where and what was unique about that? This question was not intended, not to be only about the Goddard community, but actually open to any place that they had ever been outside. The interesting thing is that a lot of the women answered things that they see in our local community, which was really a good thing to see. Some of those top answers included, I'm sorry, I lost my place there, but the Splash Pad, park, green space, those are the things that make them happy. And then other questions asked the women would like, what they would like to see in Goddard, and some of those answers included local restaurants, this is what they'd like to see come into Goddard, I apologize, that includes local restaurants, sit-down restaurants, coffee shops, dog park, green space, kid-friendly family entertainment, bar and grills, more lighting on the path in Linear Park for later walks, art and music, and an updated community center, library, and meeting space. So, in the first three questions, you can see the answers were pretty similar in responses, and we saw that kind of throughout the survey. Only a few things were mentioned that they would like to see as upgrades, the pool being one, lighting, as I mentioned, and then more green space. Some of the other things, dog parks and things like that as well, so, I'm going to kind of move on, and then we can go back at the end, and if you have any questions about the survey, we can do that. So, this is kind of exciting, this year, the Goddard Chamber Board of Directors selected a slogan to better explain the most important aspect of the chamber. The slogan was selected, "Connecting Business With Community." So my job as a President and CEO is to represent business in our community and to find opportunities for businesses to market, gain new customers, and ultimately grow. One opportunity in our community includes the Genesis Sports Complex, as you'll see here, and the Summer Ball Showdown, and the complex welcomes up to 40 teams every weekend. The Goddard Chamber is working with the complex to give businesses the opportunity to get their name in front of the teams, families, and fans. We're doing that through a variety of ways, one being that we are helping organize all of the advertisement that goes on out at the ball fields, giving our local Goddard businesses a chance to really promote themselves and draw business in while there's people from out of town and families and friends visiting, so, it's been a great opportunity, we just put the first field signs up about a week ago, so. Summer Ball Showdown will be in August, will be here from August 4th to the 8th, it's an 18-plus tournament, as well as live entertainment, so I believe there's going to be entertainment bands and fireworks four nights of the week, during that week. Many local businesses and organizations will participate in that week, including the opening night, which will be Goddard Chamber Night. 20 businesses in the Goddard area will have free tickets to give out for opening night, so they will also be present that evening, but every business that participates, they bought in for that opening night to support the tournament to make it a success, and they're given 500 free tickets to give out. So if a family shows up at the gate, they will have to pay $10 a person, but if they actually go into the local business, they can get those tickets for free. So it's a great way to draw people into our local businesses and show them what Goddard has to offer, so we're really excited about that opportunity. As Micah mentioned, we are involved in several of the community events, including National Night Out, this was from two years ago. So another way we connect businesses and the community is through special events, this year, we're working with several organizations, businesses, and community members to host Neighbor's Night Out, which actually took place in April, and National Night Out on August 13th, and the Fall Festival from September 30th to October 3rd, and Christmas on Main Street in December, which will be a brand-new event. In addition, the Goddard Chamber hosts several promotional events during the year, including the Amazing Race, which just started last week, it goes through National Night Out, our annual mixer, our Business Citizen and School Employee of the Year, and we hope to add a Wine Walk event later this fall. We're still working on the details on that. And then all of these events are selected with business and community in mind, so, any of the events that the chamber chooses to participate in, we specifically have a business purpose, and we look at it as, is this a good way to connect our businesses with the community, otherwise, as a chamber, it wouldn't make sense for us to host or to help plan, so, that's how we select it. Just a few things, it's not a secret, 2020 was very hard on businesses, especially many of our locally-owned small businesses, some of them have recovered, some of them are not as fortunate, but the one thing we are seeing, not just locally, but nationally, it was a big, big topic of discussion at a local conference that I went to just a couple months ago, and that is employment, and everybody's struggling to hire, and all, and across the board, it doesn't matter what industry. I did a search today on Kansas Works, which is our Kansas Workforce Platform, for job openings within a 25-mile radius of Goddard, there are 6,591 open jobs, that is not including most jobs that are in restaurants or service industries, those are, it includes many, many other jobs, but, as you can imagine, if you include all of the restaurants and things like that that are trying to hire as well, that number is great, much greater. Many employers are having to pay a much higher wage than they normally would just to attract the employees, as you probably have seen when you go out to a restaurant or any kind of service industry, service is much slower, people are overworked and tired, and unfortunately, that's just something that is going to be the new norm for quite a while. We're really hoping that we'll start seeing some of that, some of that relieved in September. One other item I would really like to mention from Ladies' Night, going back a little bit here, but, many of the responses asked to see new businesses come to Goddard, and they also mentioned more locally-owned businesses. So I want to say, I really appreciate all of you for serving your community, I know it's very challenging making decisions when you have probably many opinions and many sides of the community wanting different things, but I want to challenge each of you as appointed officials to really listen to the community and your small businesses, all of your locally-owned businesses, please take the time to get to know your local businesses and what they have to offer, and please support them in their growth, because it's imperative to the growth of our community. When businesses are choosing which community to expand into, they're watching you, they're watching city council, and I've heard stories how that could be the decision-maker on what community that they come into. So I just want you to please keep that in mind when you are making decisions and when you're talking business and the business growth. We have a great opportunity for growth in our community, I know that's not what everyone wants to see necessarily, but because of our location, we can either take the opportunity and kind of structure how we grow, as you know, and plan how we grow, or we can let the other communities grow around us, and I don't think that's what anybody would like to see. So again, thank you for having me here tonight, I really appreciate all of you and all the decisions that you have to make, and I am happy to take any questions.
Just kind of an overview of the 6,000 jobs here, I don't know what type of jobs are.
Those are from all industries, so that's listed on Kansas Works, and they work with employers across the state, so it could be aircraft, it could be pretty much anything. It really is, Kansas Works, I don't know if you're familiar with it, in workforce, it's a free service for employers to use to list their jobs, and so it really can cross, I mean, it could be medical, it could be just about anything. Any other questions? Micah, did I miss anything about Ladies' Night that you'd like to add? I know you had some great conversations as well.
Yeah, no, I was the only male in the whole room, which was, I survived, so.
You brought chocolates, so everybody was talking about them.
There was chocolate and wine, so I placated all of them in chocolate and wine in my witty disposition, so, I thought all in all, Ladies' Night was a good, was a success, and there was no sort of just general nascent or anything of that nature, it was all positive, very upbeat, just trying to get a feel and a pulse for what one of the largest demographics in Goddard wants to see, and granted, obviously, it was only, there was 40, so they didn't represent the majority, but it was still a pretty good, it was still a pretty good sample size for the population that we're trying to, trying to target, and all in all, I thought it went, it went very well, and a lot of stuff was what we kind of expected, sit-down restaurants, more parks, which we are actually, the city is working on, the restaurants, obviously, we're working on, more residential means more restaurants, so obviously, more rooftops means more restaurants, that's what we're trying to accomplish as well, so, all of it, you know, coffee shops, things of that nature, boutique shops, those are really hard to target, it's really easy to reach out to like a branch manager or regional manager and say, hey, do you want to come to Goddard, you know, here's our demographics, but somebody that wants to open up a flower shop, for example, it's, you can't really just go out and do an Indeed search or Google search for people wanting to open up flower shops, they're just kind of hard to find, so those boutique shops are a hard, hard target, but everything else is, was pretty good, pretty on point, what we expected to see, and so, all in all, I thought it was good. Summer Ball Showdown, as Angie touched on a little bit, is going to be in August and right around the end of July, beginning of August, August 4th through 8th, there's anticipated being somewhere between 17 and 21,000 people during that four-day period, so, we're going to see huge influx of people coming into the, to the Genesis area, and a big spike in our sales taxes, definitely off of that, but if we can set a pretty good example for how Goddard can host that many people, well, then we can consider hosting other large events too, and with the hotel being in place, we'll be able to capture that vacancy, or the occupancy tax when it's actually put in place for future growth, and then what else, you know, what have you, what might we, what might we come, so.
Yes, and the Summer Ball Tournament, this is the first year that they've had this tournament, I know that they have 16 confirmed teams, they can host up to 42, so they're really hoping that this will be just kind of the first year, and kind of letting people get to know the tournament and really make a splash, and hopefully, it'll just continue to grow. We're very lucky with the Genesis Sports Complex, it's one, I believe it's the only one in the region that is accommodating to be able to host a tournament of that size in one location, so, we're really excited to have that here, and of course, once the hotel and things get done, every year, we just hope that it'll grow a little bit more. As far as Ladies' Night goes, I think Mike and I have really kind of talked about this, and because it was so positive, we hope to at least host it once a year, if not a couple times a year, just to continue to get feedback, and it was just a really great experience, I think people really enjoyed it.
Yeah, overall, I think it's a very positive experience.
Any other questions for Angie, once she's here? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so just wrapping up, item H1, financially none, legally approved as a form, and recommendations none, this is receiving file only, so we will move on to the staff report, and I left it empty as well, so we can move on to Planning Commissioner comments and roll through the night. So item J, Planning Commissioner comments. I will document that in minutes.
No comment? You already said all you were going to say. Other than we need a walkover, definitely need more of them.
Yes, we do, that is a complicated issue with multiple entities being involved, but we are, it's ongoing.
I'll keep an eye on it.
That didn't make the WAMPO list, did it?
No, it didn't.
Our cut is going to solve some of that, I mean, the pedestrian aspect of that, at least, but, I think with the potential for the flyover that KDOT and WAMPO have all but ruled out.
Almost, yeah, it's, the target gets smaller as we progress further into the future, we bring it up, we can talk about in-the-year funding with WAMPO dollars, but, it's, it's very, it's a very difficult target to hit, simply because obviously, it's all on KDOT's jurisdiction, they have to prove any type of improvement over 54. I wouldn't necessarily say it's dead, but it's, it's a very difficult thing to wrap around because of the fact of how many entities are just involved in this, in this process of trying to get a bridge across 54, it's just, it's, it can kind of be cumbersome and just draws anything down, but, I've brought a backup, we had, we hosted WAMPO recently, and they came over and we were talking about that, and I said, and I did bring it back up again, that a pedestrian bridge, I think, would be our highest priority if we were going to get a project approved for the shortlist, if we ever made it on the shortlist to get funding, I said a pedestrian bridge is probably a high priority, and they took that into account, but obviously, I mean, we have county commissioners that have a say, we have, you know, mayors, we have, you know, everybody, city council, there's so many different people that have an opinion about what should have priority that pedestrian bridges versus, you know, more streets and everything else, it can really, it can really just kind of be bogged down or lost in the, in the hustle and bustle, but, I do bring it up quite frequently about how we can consider that, but, but yeah, it's a, it's a difficult thing, target to hit, for sure.
Kind of curious on more lighting on the trail? I know that the City of Goddard has reasonable lighting here, but to best of my knowledge, there isn't any on the trail, and if there were any, who's would it be?
Right, so that's a good question, we annexed the trail as a, as a, you know, meanders through the city, ultimately, it's considered Prairie Travelers, if you were looking at ownership, the city does not own the trail, Prairie Travelers owns that trail, and so, we would have to get approval through them to put lighting in there, I mean, it's definitely a subject that could be brought up, and we could sort of have a meeting of the minds, if you will, between Prairie Travelers and the city if we wanted to consider putting lighting up, I think ultimately Prairie Travelers would probably say we could, but we would be responsible for maintaining them, is what I would guess, and so, that's just something that we'd have to take into consideration if we would want to have that continuing expense, I don't think Evergy would, every time we've talked with Evergy about adding in additional lighting, they'd say, there's no problem there, they would just run it on our monthly bill, and if there's any additional. Yeah, of course, you know, if there's any sort of unique lighting, they don't, Evergy does not put in unique lighting, so any type of fancy lights, there, there's the typical Cobra lights that come out and can arc over, besides those type of lights, Evergy says you would be responsible for buying the new lights and maintaining the new lights with whatever company you go with, and they would just do the electricity, so, that would be just an additional cost, but, something to be considered, it's just that would be, once again, we would have to sit Prairie Travelers, technically, that's their jurisdiction as well, so.
Was this data collected at the meeting?
Yes.
So is there, it's interesting to read through here and see a bunch of these things that, that are being addressed.
Yes, yeah, we're happy.
And obviously, it's, it's a slow process, so some of these are going to take a little more time, but, is there any plan to inform them?
Oh, I mean, I suppose, really, it was supposed to be just more of an open dialogue, wasn't supposed to be a, you know, you ask a question, I answer the question, they ask a question, it's just supposed to be an open dialogue, and granted, some of them were from outside the city, and so if they were unaware of some local project, and no harm was found there, it was just a matter of.
I was just curious, because.
Yeah, yeah.
This is a great group of advocates.
Yep.
I would think, you know, if we were going to do a community-type meeting, or, for any one of, you know, Northside Park, for example.
Right, right.
I noticed that's mentioned several times.
Right, 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 absolutely.
So I was just curious, you know, if, if half the group didn't even know that the city now owns property for that.
Right.
It would be, I just thought it'd be worthwhile for them to, to understand that that's in the works so that they could advocate for.
Yeah, absolutely, so, I mean, and we're going to, since we saw that Ladies' Night was pretty much a, a pretty good success, then we're going to try to have it at least once a year, if not twice a year, and then, you know, we can bring up some of our new projects and sort of showcase them, be like, oh, by the way, we bought land for a north park, or, you know, we are actively working on crossing 54, or, you know, we just talked to Prairie Travelers about lighting for the, for the trail, and we would be able to showcase that and brag a little bit about the city, as we have actually taken into account, which is a very good point, taken into account their feedback, and not just kind of left it on the sticky notes hanging up somewhere, we've actually taken into account their feedback, and here's what they said during the meeting, and here's what we're actually doing now, which is, which will be good for them, and they will actually feel like that their voice is being heard, and what some of, at least some of what they're considering is being implemented, so, yeah, that's a very good point.
I just, you know, a lot of these comments, you can definitely tell that they are part of the community.
Yeah, yeah.
And the main, you know, the things that we address.
Yes.
Are as important as some of the other things, but, you know, when you see someone here that comments they want strong internet connection, you definitely know.
Was that a.
We do collect email addresses for everybody that attended, so we can send them results of their feedback, and so that's also a good way that we can keep in touch with them.
And I don't know that they would care to read bullet point by bullet point, but, I mean, it just lends itself to, you know, to a few paragraphs of, these are the, these are the things that you, you thought were important, and these are the things that are in the works, it was just, I was just curious.
No, absolutely.
So it's good feedback.
Absolutely, and that's kind of what the Word Clouds did too, is, and it's supposed to show where there's consensus, right, so a big yellow park shows that that was a very prominent theme, you know, and just to show that, you know, everyone had their own ideas, but if there was a consensus, the consensus would be around parks, and so, that's very clearly something that people value very highly, so.
Another question I have is, how much interaction do we have with the baseball tournament? You know, for example, if only 16 teams come, can we find out why, if it wasn't 40?
Oh, absolutely, no, we can, we can, yeah, no, we have a very good relationship with Scott Martin, he's the Baseball Genesis Director, yeah, so we can, we work with them, we work with them quite a bit, we work with, you know, everyone who's, I've spoke with, his gentleman's name's David, he's putting together the Summer Ball Showdown, and so we've talked to him, and, yeah, the numbers for me will be really good too, so obviously, no matter how, if we have 16 teams that we have over, if we have less, we could find out why, you know, and if it's just that there's lack of hotels, which would probably be a key reason, you know, people are going to say, we're going to go to this baseball tournament, and they're going to go on Google, and they're going to look for, you know, reservations for hotels, and since we don't really have one, very much, we don't have very many rooms available, they'll probably, that might be, you know, a deterring factor, so, I imagine that would probably one of the factors, but, obviously, we can get any type of information back from them and say, hey, what were your numbers, what did you hear, was it positive, negative, and everything in between, and we'll, we'll collect that information.
One of the issues, I'm sorry, I don't.
No, you're good, sure.
I meet with them weekly, one of the issues that they're having, because this is a new tournament, when you're looking at 18 and over teams, you're also looking at rules within NCAA and things like that on practice times, their summer teams are disbanded, so a lot of them will go directly helm if they're playing teams and stuff, or on teams during the summer, and so it's really just a matter of timing, and I'm sure you're all familiar with the NBC tournament in Wichita, that is actually happening again this year, and so, there are a lot of teams that are hopeful that they will be in the NBC tournament, and so they're kind of waiting it out. I think what they're seeing is, as we get closer to the tournament date, they're really hoping that more teams will sign up, because they're kind of understanding where their schedule lies and what tournaments they're going to be playing at the end of the season, so, right now, it's 16 confirmed, they really feel like they're going to have over 20 at least, so.
No, that's excellent, I just, I was just curious, because obviously, we're short on restaurants, we're short on, but, that's good feedback too, I mean, if they're not, if they're not showing up because we don't have restaurants, that's one thing, but if they don't care, I was just curious.
No, very good, yeah.
So follow-up, I guess, you know, I mean, looking forward at like restaurant growth and everything, you know, how is our, like, this is normal city growth versus, you know, that's, it's going to be peak times?
Right.
You know, and, you know, is that, how does that affect, I mean, restaurants and everything?
Yeah, I have an opinion on that, Angie, do you have an opinion on that?
Well, I.
Restaurant peak times and.
Yeah, if you look at the weekends, our restaurants are already packed, they are bringing in, just the normal tournaments are bringing in about 40 teams every weekend, it's not significant like this Murrell Street on where it's all condensed and, you know, around the clock baseball that it is during every weekend, and so, and visiting with some of our restaurant owners there, you know, they can't get enough help on the weekends, and they're just packed, during the week, it's a little slower, so, I think that, you know, we obviously can sustain more restaurants, definitely more hotels, because the people that Genesis is bringing in just on a normal basis are from all over the nation, it's not just local, so, when I, I visited with Hampton in a little bit, and she had come and visited, and she said, it seems like you guys already need more than one hotel one, so I think they're already looking, but yeah, I definitely think that we could sustain it, even just with our normal. even just with our normal, not with the big events coming in.
When is the swimming, I mean, what's the anticipation for the use of the swim part of it? Is it in the winter war and summer?
That's a good question. I mean, I, for swimming, I don't even know if the high schools have a swim team, do they? The local Eisenhower and Goddard High have swim teams?
Not currently, no.
But I mean, isn't the, is the Genesis, I mean, if there's some, for Olympic teams to train in, is that so?
It's Olympic size, I don't think any Olympic teams will be training there, but there'd probably be high school tournaments and, you know, pre-collegiate tournaments and everything else for a swim. But yeah, I don't know. I mean, if Kansas has got significant swim competition, who could say? You know, I'm still, I grew up in California, so I have no experience with that, I mean, local, you know, and, but yeah, I mean, that's, I anticipate that was one of the reasons why they wanted to focus so much square footage on a, on an auditorium was probably for that reason. I guess, you know, hindsight being 2020, once everything's all built out, it'll be interesting just to see what has the most use. Right now, obviously the baseball diamond's being finished, they're outperforming what we anticipated in, in such a way that we're actually paying off the bonds that are helping finance that project faster than we had originally anticipated. And our bond, our bond attorney even commented on that during one of our council meetings, that the bonds are being paid off faster simply because of the fact that there's more volume than what we had anticipated from that. So the sales taxes are rolling in to help pay off the financing of that, so that's really good. It'll be interesting to see if the same can be said for the rest of it, so, but it'll be, it'll be good to see.
You just not going to say anything?
I'm good.
I think we'll close, we should comment.
All right. So next regular Planning Commission meeting will be August 9th at 7:00 PM. I'll be looking for a adjournment.
Make a motion, adjourn?
On favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Angie, appreciate that. Please take a pair of hands up on the way out. No, that was great, no, that was great. We finished at 7:32, which is one of our fastest planning mission meetings, but we finished...